The Commissioners Court of Brazos County will meet in regular session on October the 18th, 2022 at 10:00 a.m., to the Commissioners' courtroom at the County Administration Building, 200 South Texas Avenue, Suite 106. This meeting will be conducted by video conference with a list of quorum here in the Commissioners' Court in accordance with provisions set forth in Section 551.127 of the Texas Government Code. First item on the agenda is the invocation, pledge of allegiance to the U.S. Texas flag, and Commissioner Colley will lead those.
Good morning. Will you bow with me? It is written, "As I live," said the Lord, "every knee shall bow, every tongue shall confess to God." O heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of this community. Bless, in your very special way, all families of Brazos County, all Brazos County employees, our first responders, and those who are in need in our community. We thank you for what you have done and what you're about to do. We give thanks to you for all your blessings, your mercies, and your grace. We offer this prayer in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Second item on the agenda is a call for citizens' input and/or concerns. You want to speak?
Yes, sir.
Come on up. You'll have to give us your name and--
Hattie.
Hattie.
My name's Keith Watson. I've been a resident here all my life. I live out in Stone Creek Farms, out of Top 1179, just past Frank's Country Store. And we've got a real problem with people speeding in our neighborhood. We've got 17 children under the age of 13. It's not a very long road. There's only about less than 30 houses. And about earlier this year, I requested that-- I called the Sheriff's Department, requested that a deputy come out and do some enforcement, maybe actually, you know, clock some people and give out some tickets. And from what I've seen and heard from my neighbors, that hadn't-- we've seen some patrolling, but no, you know, no actual enforcement. So a couple of weeks ago, I asked-- I requested on the website that they put a speed limit sign up, which they did within a few days, which I'm very appreciative of. And when they did that, I put a sign on that-- I mounted a sign on that sign that said, "Please drive like your kids live here." And the county took that down. And after they did that, I realized I shouldn't have done that. Like, that was against the law for me to put that sign up. So I put another request in, saying, "Hey, can y'all put a few signs throughout the neighborhood that say, you know, children playing, whatever, you know, caution children are out?" And they said that they can't do that because those signs aren't recognized by the state. And I've also found out that I can't put my sign up because there's an easement on the side of the road. So I got an email from the county engineer saying that I can't put the sign up because of the easements and whatnot. And he also says that additionally, the county roads are not equipped to handle pedestrian traffic, and hence, we discourage folks from walking, playing, biking, et cetera, on them. And so my question is, is what do I do to protect the kids? We've got 17 under the age of 12, and do I need to-- if they want to go to their friend's house, do I need to load them in my truck and drive them down there because they're not supposed to play or bike? I just-- I'm just asking for some help from the county to be proactive to protect these kids. We've got FedEx up and down the road at 45, 50 miles an hour UPS. I mean, they're all-- it's just-- it's crazy. The kid's going to get killed or hurt, and I'm just here to be proactive before that happens.
Okay. You realize that we can't respond. This is in the segment that's public, you know, input, but we're not able to respond in sessions because it's not posted, but--
I just wanted to raise the concern. I've done all I could, I thought, up until this point, and I figured this was kind of my last--
Yeah.
--my last resort is to make the community aware and the court aware.
Okay.
And thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else in this portion? Hearing done, we will do the presentation and discussion of the update of the Brazos County Property-Assessed Clean Energy Program.
Thank you, Judge Peters. My name is Charlene Huddinger. I'm the President of Texas Pace Authority. We're a nonprofit administrator of pace programs across the state, and it's our privilege to serve Brazos County. Wanted to provide an update today and share with you what's been happening across the state and to work with you to figure out how we can advance this program more aggressively in Brazos. So the idea behind PACE is that everybody-- this program is an energy efficiency, water efficiency financing program. It's a mechanism that the county created in 2016 for businesses and nonprofits. And there are two ways to make these organizations stronger. One is to sell more stuff or more services, and the other is to lower your costs. And it's the lowering the cost piece that PACE is about. So if we can lower businesses' utility costs and increase their net operating income, they're going to be stronger, they're going to be able to hire more people. But they're also going to be freeing up energy and water resources for all the other businesses and nonprofits in the county and moving into the county. So property-assessed clean energy, this is a mechanism that the county created. There is no cost to the county. It doesn't cost taxpayers any dollars-- any funding, and it doesn't-- shouldn't impact your staff. And so the idea here is that you've created a mechanism that allows a private property owner to negotiate with a private lender, and because of the local government's mechanism, the lenders are willing to loan over a longer period of time. And the role of the Texas Pace Authority is to be quality control and to make sure that these projects are done properly. This is entirely voluntary. There are no mandates here. The program has been successful. It hasn't been without its bumps, but it's been successful. And our goal has always been to have a high-volume, low-cost program so that we can serve businesses of all sizes, and that this would be a trusted mechanism that'll be around 20, 30, 40 years from now. So we play a very long game, and we are very strict in what we do, and we actually take some criticism for that. But the idea here is that traditionally, a new roof, a new HVAC system, these are considered equipment loans. They're very risky. There's no collateral, per se, for the lenders, so the lenders want to get paid back in five years or less. And that creates a tower of cash flow pain, because these are expensive items, for the most part, and they take a long time to break even with energy or water savings. So if you look on the left, that's the conventional situation, and you don't get to the utility savings until you've paid for the measure. And we call that the Tower of Pain. And all the PACE mechanism does is knock that tower over. The property owner still has to pay for the full cost, but they pay over a longer period of time with smaller payments, and that means they can use the utility savings to pay for the program. It doesn't work for every property, but where it works, it works very well. And you'll see our growth over the last nine years has been pretty extensive. We've worked hard to serve all of these cities and counties, and it's been a privilege. I hate to think about the number of miles I've put on rental cars, but it's been fun and probably the most rewarding part of my job is out visiting with folks. The program has grown substantially. We are about a million and a half shy of $250 million in new energy and water-saving investments that wouldn't have happened without this program, encouraging businesses to do more on the front end by eliminating the barriers that stop that from happening. So we've done 61 projects. The small-- well, I think I have another slide that shows this, but the smallest is $70,000, the largest is $27 million. Developers are figuring this out and looking to do much bigger projects. We are working hard to get local lenders involved so that small businesses and medium-sized businesses can also take advantage of this. So both urban and rural, we committed to serve all of Texas, and with Commissioner Colley's help, Brazos was one of the first counties to adopt the program, and we're very grateful for that early leadership. Done just about every type of project, and you can only use this program for the measures that involve energy efficiency, water efficiency, or creating power on site. That can be solar in a hospital or an industrial situation. That can be something called combined heat and power, but creating power on site. And we're finding that a lot of these measures also make these properties more resilient to storm damage, flooding, et cetera. So we-- even safety during COVID, there was a lot of push to do touchless features, which also tend to save a lot of energy and water, but they make the property safer for people health-wise as well. So this is the model program in Texas. A lot of states have followed this. City or county can create the program. Like, as I said, Texas Pace Authority is quality control. That line-- that black line, we consider that a firewall. We do not develop the projects or profit from the projects. We get paid a user fee by the owners who decide to use the program as an alternative to tax dollars, but we don't profit any other way, because if we're going to be quality control, there can't be any question of a conflict of interest. So in Texas, the property owners have all the power. They can choose their lenders, they can choose their capital providers, and then, when they're ready, they apply to the program, and we make sure everything is satisfied. I want to stop here because one of the first projects in Texas was a project here in Brazos. We were very early. I'm just going to call this a learning experience and tell you that we've gotten a lot stricter. It was a very small project. There were conflicts of interest between the owners and the contractors and some other folks and the lenders, and it just did not work out well. And we think that that situation has dampened some interest in the program here, and I'm very sorry about that. But I will tell you that we are better for it and that, along with a lot of the early programs, there-- the early-- the local governments that created this early had an extra burden of trying to convince people that this program would work. And so some of the earlier programs have actually been some of the slower ones to take off. That is changing. What is different now, post-COVID, is that, one, everything we did in terms of education and outreach before COVID, it's like it never happened. We are starting from scratch. But number two, the energy and water prices that were so low that a lot of businesses said, "Why would I bother with that extra engineering to prove savings? Money's cheap. You know, my costs are not very high." Energy and water prices are increasing significantly for businesses and homeowners, and we're seeing a lot more interest because now there are some real costs that can be avoided. And the second thing is, as interest rates have gone up, businesses have started to say, "Whoa, I need to raise money to fix these properties up or to build them correctly or to take a property, like an old office building that doesn't make sense as an office building anymore, and find a higher, better use for it, like a hotel or an apartment complex or something else." And in those renovations, I need to deal with these higher costs. PACE has become a lot more attractive, and so we're hoping that that will make more sense. The other change that is happening, and some of the early adopter programs are catching up, is that local lenders, who were very fearful of this program, are starting to feel a lot more confident about it. So we have two lenders in Texas, one in Elgin, Texas, and one in Waco, have actually funded PACE projects. And that's really what we need to have happen, is for local credit unions and banks to become PACE lenders. They know their customers better, they're also going to have quality control. But we have a significant increase in local lenders who will consent to these, because this is entirely voluntary. So if there's a mortgage on the property or a senior loan on the property, then that lender needs to also consent. And early on, no was the really quick answer. Now they're starting to understand it better, see advantages for them in it, and so we are very hopeful. That takes a long-- to turn a bank from no to yes takes a long time, but it's finally starting to happen. So the Department of Energy came out with an assessment tool last year, and we can study the counties, and there's over 1,500 commercial buildings that qualify for PACE in Brazos County. That's over 26 million square feet. In order for them to do PACE-qualified measures, they would have to invest $108 million, and that opportunity would result in $159 million in savings. So the opportunity for commercial buildings in Brazos would create over $50 million in new economy. We just need to get out there and remind everybody that this program exists. That DOE assessment tool does not include multifamily or industrial, and we know that Brazos County has a huge multifamily apartment complex economy here, so tapping into that is going to create huge opportunity that this DOE assessment tool didn't even capture. So how do we increase the impact? One of the things that I would like to recommend is that we update the documents. Your documents were some of our earliest. We've learned a lot in the last eight years, and we would very much like to update those documents. One of the major changes would remove a requirement on your tax office that they put the assessment notice in the envelope. That turned out to be a huge mechanical hassle. We send the notices directly now for all the new programs, and we would like to do that for Brazos County. But there are other, more sophisticated additions to these language-- to this language, so I really would like to propose that as soon as possible for future projects. We also need to make the industrial community aware of an A&amp;M Industrial Assessment Center. The university has a program for more senior engineering students and master students, and they will go out and do energy assessments, energy audits, at no charge for industrial, small and medium-sized industrials. That's a huge advantage in this area, because one of the difficulties is, how do we get started? Who's going to help us figure out what our savings might actually be? And here in Brazos County, you've got a wonderful opportunity, not just for the students, but for the industrials as well. And then finally, we need to focus on multifamily projects. I have been working since 2017 to get HUD to approve our program so that they would consent in multifamily situations. So it's not just affordable housing, although that's what I've been working for, but I've recently realized that this letter from HUD will also cover all FHA housing, and that should make it much easier for the multifamily community here to be able to take advantage of the program. The last email I received from HUD was about two weeks ago, saying, "We're-- the letter's being drafted." So we're on HUD time, but I'm really hoping by the end of the year that we'll have that, and I think that will make a big difference. There are lots of resources out there for people. But one of the other additions that I wanted to share with you is, late last week, we received an application for an $8 million PACE project for multifamily student housing in College Station, and I'm really excited about it. And I'm very hopeful that if it's appropriate, and once your legal folks review the documents, if we can, update those quickly so that they take effect with this new project. It would be great for the county, and the documents would be stronger and more clear, delineate who does what. But I wanted to provide this and also share with you that while there's great interest from big developers doing big things, we have done some wonderful small projects, kind of Main Street projects, in Waco and Elgin and Corsicana, and so I'm-- we committed to serve everyone. We've grown our staff as fast as we can. We work hard, and we love what we do. But we need your help to jump-start this program again in Brazos County. We need workshops, and we need to visit with local banks. So if there's a Rotary Club or a Chamber or anyone that you would recommend that we speak with or would really welcome those opportunities, we really are starting over. May I answer any questions?
I don't really have a question. I appreciate you coming in, Charlene. I mean, you know, as you've already pointed out, we did have a rough start, you know, with that one project, but I'm happy to hear that the tax office will no longer be involved and have to send out notices, and all that was their concern early on. I mean, I think this is a good program, and I, you know-- hopefully, as you've already pointed out, with the cost of energy today, it may make a-- may be a lot more appealing to those companies to actually use this method of trying to upgrade their energy efficiency. So I think we can certainly move forward and see if we can get those documents updated so we can move forward. And I think, you know, workshop where we can allow people to understand and have a better understanding of what PACE program is and what it can mean for those businesses and the community out there, I think it's a great idea.
Thank you. I think a successful project will go a long way to getting people re-engaged.
Yeah.
I really appreciate your patience and hope that we can communicate better and more often, and I welcome your thoughts on how we can do a better job about that, too.
Okay.
And thank you very much for your time today.
Thank you.
Okay. The next is to consider and take action on Agenda Items 4 through 27. Number four is discussion and approval of tax rate .4635 tax year 2022, and we don't have four here, so we will skip over four, five, and six because we need four present or-- are on Zoom, and I'm assuming that we don't have somebody-- so there's just three, so we will have to skip over those. If we happen to get a fourth come in, we'll move back up to them. Number seven is consider and take action on a possible county burn ban. Jason, you'll come up and kind of tell us what's--
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Jason Ware, Deputy EMC for Brazos County. We aren't as bad as we were a few months ago, as far as our drought index is concerned. Some of the concerns that we do have are the cold fronts that are blowing through this time of year that are dropping the humidity levels really low and drying things out. So we are dry, but we're not critical like we were before. Last week, we did run a number of wildland fires on the east side of the county that resulted in probably about 25-plus acres being burned, and some of them were actually in your neighborhood, Judge. But-- so we're at a point now where we can go either way. It is the recommendation of two of the fire chiefs in the county to go ahead and go with a burn ban. The third one said he could go either way, so he's not opposed to a burn ban, and the fourth is against it right now. But-- so, you know, currently, like I said, our drought index, we are on the high side, almost to 700, but we're not quite there yet on a scale of one-- from one to 800. So we are dry, but we're not critical just yet. So you have any questions for me?
So have we had actually any fires that could be attributed to, let's say, having a burn ban in place that we might have-- if everybody followed the law, that we wouldn't have had that happen?
Correct. So we have not had any controlled burns that got out of hand. The ones on the northeast side of the county were caused by an 18-wheeler with a tire blowout, and he was driving along, and several spot fires that grew rather large. And then the other one that resulted in about 15 acres was a result of an electrical fence. So no controlled burns that we know of right now that have gotten out of hand that have sparked anything of major interest at this point in time.
Okay.
Judge, I'd like to consider postponing the decision on the burn ban until next week.
Okay.
I think it's a great idea to do that.
Yeah. So you want to make a motion?
Move that we table item number seven until next week.
I know. Second that.
Okay. Motion made, seconded to table number seven until next week. Any further discussion? All vipers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number eight is Resolution 22-029, supporting Proposition B in support of a $10 increase in vehicle registration fees.
Move approval.
Second that.
Okay. Motion's made and seconded to approve that, and I've got number eight. Ronnie Vitulie wanted to speak on that. Come on up.
I want to make a comment, too.
Okay.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. I'd like to speak concerning the upcoming Proposition B election for November 8th. On a story from KBTX on June 8th, Barry Moore, the chairperson of Brazos County RMA, was quoted as saying, quote, "The fee is a small price to pay to help ease congestion and improve roads in the county." The RMA has expressed three initial projects of interest. One is the inner-- the eastern interloop. Two, make improvements to the interchange of State Highway 21 and State Highway 47. And three, the interchange of Arrington Road and William D. Fitch. All three of these projects are also on the list to fund from Proposition A, the $100 million bond election. So these projects are on both lists. These are all great projects and needed in our community. The problem is, if anyone believes these projects will be completed with the $1.6 million this $10 fee would generate, to quote George Strait, "I got some motion front property in Arizona I want to sell you." Just the eastern interloop is projected to cost $305 million. So why did the political signs for Prop B say, "Reduce traffic congestion in Brazos County"? One of my problems I have with Prop B is the lack of transparency. The $10 fee would do nothing to relieve traffic congestion in Brazos County. At best, I would call it a seed money. It is wrong for the RMA and for the Commissioners' Court to present anything to the contrary. There are citizens out there that I've spoken to that say, "For a $10 fee, that's a great deal to eliminate traffic in our community." This is how this is being sold and perceived, and I think it's wrong. There are 11 RMAs in the state of Texas. All of them, except for the newly formed RMA in Brazos County, have toll roads and are funded primarily through the revenue toll roads provide. On September 27th of this year, in an interview with WTAW, Mr. Moore is asked specifically about toll roads, and is there any appetite for toll roads? And he says, "There is no appetite for toll roads in Texas or in Brazos County," quote, "at this point." He used that phrase three times. So does this mean at some time-- other time, toll roads will be considered? So there is the money. So where is the money to build all these roads going to come from? The three projects I mentioned earlier have a price tag combined of $386 million. Let me address the powers of the unelected RMA, which should be of great concern to everyone. The RMA has eminent domain. On the same interview with WTAW, Mr. Moore was specifically asked about the RMA's power of eminent domain, and he confirmed that, yes, they do have the power, but said, quote, "It is used as a last resort." Well, that's what eminent domain is, the right for an unelected government agency to force you to sell your property to the agency. This is what the publication from the RMA says itself about the powers of the RMA. They issue revenue bonds, which are a category municipal bond supported by revenue from specific projects such as Toll Bridge-- revenue from specific projects such as toll bridge, toll highways, and local stadiums. They establish tolls and they acquire property for transportation projects. What other powers does that RMA have? They have a lot, but my main concern deals with utilities. They have authority with electricity, water, telecommunications, and pipelines. Another area of concern, and this is straight from Texas Transportation Code 370 dot 172, concerns revenue stream generated by RMA. They are tolls, fares, or other charges from transportation projects and proceeds from the sale or lease of transportation projects. I don't have time to elaborate on this one, but it's very interesting. It concludes proceeds from sale or lease of property adjoining a transportation project.
Three times.
Okay. Do I can ask a couple of questions? So I think part of the problem I have is, Commissioner Colley, are you aware of the 11 RMAs in the state of Texas?
Yes.
Can you, can you have mentioned where a few of those are located?
I can answer that.
I was asking Commissioner Colley.
Well, I think the larger cities, you would think of Austin, Houston, Dallas.
I'm sorry.
I would say our larger urban cities, Tyler, Houston, Dallas.
Okay.
Is that okay? Did I pass the test?
No, you didn't. Commissioner Barry, would you, couldn't you elaborate a little bit?
Yes. Austin, Dallas, Houston, Tyler, Brownsville, El Paso, San Antonio. The RMA, the legislation is very broad. And a lot of those cities have toll roads. But to get a toll road, you need to get the legislature to approve you going to the voters to get it, just like we're going to the voters now for the $10 fee. We, it took two sessions, four years to get the legislation passed to allow the voters to make this decision. The $10 fee is not going to establish a bureaucracy. It can only be used for projects. And these are projects that are approved by the MPO, which is our Metropolitan Planning Organization. And those are text-out approved projects. But just like the bond issue we're going out for, the RMA can do some of the early legwork. They can look at doing an environmental study. They can look at engineering studies to where are you going to have to relocate utilities. Those are the types of things that will make the project available to let. When it's available to let, or, you know, shovel-ready, as the saying goes, locally we have to match 20%. That's where the bond issue comes in. The money we raise from the bond issue will go to that 20% match to text out, which is going to provide many, many more millions of dollars for those roads. Those roads that you mentioned, which are on the RMA list, are very expensive. We're talking, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars. And so if we can use $20 million to match $120 million of state money, it's going to go a long ways towards building those roads. There's not going to be a toll road in Brazos County in my lifetime. I can guarantee you that. Because there's no appetite in the state legislature for them. So the state legislature is not approving any more toll roads.
So if you look at the RMAs today, there are 11 of them, and they're not in Houston, and they're not in Dallas. They're, what, what, if you look at where they get their, their, how, how, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay. So where does the money come that the RMA has, what they, the project that they have supported? Where does that money come from to support those projects?
The toll roads in those counties fund those projects in those counties. The money we raise here from the $10 fee will go for the basic costs of doing environmental studies, doing an engineering study of where you relocate utilities if need be. Those, those are the proj, the things that will get a project ready.
So, so my concern is, in the past, with these, with RMAs, the project that they've been working on, the, okay.
I'll have this conversation with you later.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ronnie. I think Barry is here, Barry Moore. There you are.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. I'm Barry Moore. I'm the chairman of the Brazos County Regional Mobility Authority, the RMA. When I was a child, I would get in arguments with my parents. My dad's favorite thing to say was, just because you keep saying it, doesn't make it true. And I appreciate Commissioner Barry's comment about toll roads not being something that, that she will see. There, at no point has the RMA discussed toll roads. At no point has any RMA, Brazos County RMA literature talked about toll roads. It's nowhere in our strategic plan, a plan that's worked on diligently by our board and, and others in the county and at text out. So I'm, I'm here to, to respond to those comments. Toll roads are not, are not a part of the plan for the reasons that Commissioner Barry just stated. There is no appetite for toll roads. There is no, there is no appetite locally. There's no appetite in Austin for toll roads. And I would also go a step further in saying, the problems that we face with transportation and mobility in the county would not be solved by a toll road. So again, folks can keep saying it over and over, but it, but it doesn't make it true. And so Mr. Vitulie quoted King George. And so I, I would like to do the same and say, write this down, take a little note to remind you, in case you didn't know, that the Brazos County RMA is not discussing toll roads and will not be discussing toll roads. And I'm happy to respond if you have any questions for me.
I don't.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Okay. That's the only two that I had listed to speak on that.
I believe I make a motion to approve item number eight.
Oh, and I second it.
Okay. Motion made and seconded to approve the resolution supporting the increase of vehicle registration fees, Prop B. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Thank y'all for coming in and speaking, both of you. Number nine is request for the following personnel change with effective date as October the 18th, 2022. This change will increase the exposition centers FY 2023 budget in the amount of $4,425.
Move approval.
I'm of approval of A. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 10 is approve the following job description.
Move approval A. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 11 is request approval of Constable Precinct II acceptance of monetary donation in the amount of $650 from the city of Wixson Valley.
Move approval.
Second. Want to thank the city of Wixson Valley for their donation.
Yes, that's right. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 12 is approval requested from Constable Precinct III for an NRA grant application approval.
Move approval. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 13 is revision of Brazos County cell phone policy to prohibit linking or adding personnel accounts to the county's cell phones.
Move approval. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 14 is approval between Brazos County Commissary Fund and the Restorative Justice Ministries of Brazos Valley, Inc., providing Chapin services for voluntary, for volunteer coordination for the inmates of Brazos County Jail.
Move approval. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 15 is approval of workers, workers renewal with Texas Association of Counties Risk Management Pool.
Move approval. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 16 is approval of TAC HEBP renewal plan for 2023.
Move approval. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 17 is approval of Contract 23 dash zero six seven for secure short-term detention juvenile offenders, offenders in Anderson County.
Move approval. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 18 is approval of Contract 23 dash zero six nine for secure short-term detention of juvenile offenders with Wood County.
Move approval. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 19 is approval of Contract 23 dash zero seven zero for malpractice insurance with USI insurance.
Move approval. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 20 is approval of following committee for the evaluation proposal for RFQ CIP 23 dash five five eight Brazos County Administration Building feasibility study.
Move approval A through H. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 21 is consideration and modification for potential scope, scope of work for CIP 23 five sixty-one broadband consultant. RFP should be submitted to the court at the future date for approval, permission to advertise.
Move approval. Second.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. So, Charles.
What, what we have provided to y'all was a sample scope of work. We haven't, we put to get this together from multiple consultant RFPs that we've seen. And so we would like some direction from Commissioners' Court on exactly what you want that consultant to perform, what task you want them to complete for the court. And so we haven't received a whole lot of direction. There's been much discussion, but as far as the details going forward, what do you want them to do? And then based on that scope of work, then we would finalize the evaluation criteria, submission, documentation, and so forth for consideration, evaluation, and then award by the court. So we presented, we presented to y'all multiple scenarios in this scope of work. And so what I'd like to do is go through, I don't want to make this an arduous task, but if y'all have some direction, I look forward to that. But the first consideration is whether you want to do it in the totality of Brazos County, or you want to do it in the unincorporated portions only.
I mean, I think Trevor and I went over this, and he kind of gave some direction from his perspective of how it might be. And I know, I know it's not going to be a perfect RFQ. And I, I understand where you're coming from. You need, you need direction. If you're going to draw that thing up, you've got to have some direction to get it done. What the sample that, that both Commissioners have here now was kind of Trevor's, from his expertise is, and he's kind of been involved with discussions about broadband, about what his recommendation would be from his perspective. I mean, as far as I'm concerned, I don't have a, a good feel about what we need to be doing. I mean, we've, we've had a lot of discussion about where we go with broadband. And we really haven't come up, in my opinion, a good way to be able to utilize money. And of course, we know that supposedly there's more state money that's going to be available. So that was my thinking with trying to get a consultant, was to try to prepare for that. If that money's coming, and then I don't even know that they've got all the rules out yet. But, but as it's coming out, we need to be prepared and have somebody on board, hopefully, that can help us work through that grant money and figure out, you know, how's the best way to make it work. So that's kind of what my goal would have been to, with this, is to get somebody on that would help work us through those, those things. So, and, and I, I think, right now, the, the recommendation that Trevor, you know, from this list, it looked like was probably as good as we're going to get today. I mean, I, that's kind of my perspective on it.
Sir.
So you, do you have the, the, the copy that was yellowed to where, actually what would be left in there, I think? And the only, I think the only thing that was blank, if I remember right, was a date, maybe when?
Well, there, there's a date if the court had a goal as to when they wanted a final written report. Again, as you mentioned, that's kind of a moving target.
Yeah.
The state broadband office has their efforts going on at this point in time. I believe they're supposed to have an end goal of having their report out by January 1. So I don't know if you wanted to do it before then, after then, or we can just leave it and say, as determined by Commissioners' Court, you know, as more information becomes available.
Yeah, I think I would prefer that.
Yeah, me too.
The other thing that was crossed out was the upload-download speeds. The federal government has established some goals for that, what they believe to be good speeds, but whatever the wish of the court. I mean, they, originally, I think, was 10 download, 10 down and one up. And I think they've modified that to 25 down and three up. But if you want to leave that blank or let the consultant help determine that, then we're happy to serve.
At this point. Yeah. I, I think there's just too many unknowns at this point to, to make a determination as to upload-download speeds and that's, and actually when we hire a consultant, because we don't really know what we're looking for.
Right. So the speeds, all of the grant funds have speeds, speed requirements attached to them. So when I went through that, I kind of tried to keep it as broad as possible to not box us in or, well, to do anything to prevent us from helping anybody. And so it's pretty broad, but the requirements on the grants are really what's going to determine how all this shakes out.
And Trevor, I prefer us to leave it broad.
Yeah.
And, you know, take the advice of our consultant if he's a good one.
Absolutely. I hope so. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
So can we table this?
Well, I mean, I think it's, to me, it was okay to pass.
Yeah.
And we'll move on from there.
Yes, okay. Then I make a motion that we, that we, that I approve the, the yellow markings on the broadband consultant's scope of work.
And I'll second that one.
Okay. The, the motion in the second is to approve what was
Presented.
Presented.
Highlighted in yellow.
Yes.
Did, did, okay. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 22 is tax refund application for the following.
Move approval A through D, A through B?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve A and B. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 23 is budget amendments. Budget amendment FY 21 slash 22 budget amendments, 51.01 and 51.04, and FY 22 23 budget amendments, 2.01 through 2.10.
Move approval.
A and B?
Yes.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 24 is personnel change status.
Move approval A and B?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 25 is payment claims. Claims to be paid by Brazos County. Claim number 811-8255 through claim number 811-8413 and claim number 9006006 through claim number 9006060.
Move approval. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. I would like to jump back up to number, this really would fall within the three property tax, four, five, or six, and when, I've kind of looked at what the cities do with their presentations and how they come up with direction about what they need for tax rates, and I don't know, you may want to put that up on the screen. What they do is estimated days of cash, and they are required, cities are required to have 60 days of cash by statute. Probably both cities, I think, but I know City of Bryan, in their ordinance, require 90 days, and really what they push is to get 100 days. They like to have enough money that if it falls apart, you're still able to operate. And so this is kind of the format that they've used, and you can see right here, as of 2022, we've got 248 days. And I can kind of tell you why that is so, so large. I mean, as I said yesterday, my philosophy, and I think the court's philosophy has been, over the last number of years, to, if there are projects that are, not huge projects, but the projects for rebuilding roads or for redoing a building or doing something like that, if, we would build reserves, build fund balance, and then do those projects out of the fund balance as things were needed. Because we were looking at five years and maybe 10 years about what we projected to those needs might be. When COVID hit, everything pretty much shut down, so we did not spend money on many projects. I mean, the projects pretty much shut down because, you know, every time somebody might catch COVID, you know, you walked out, you know? Nobody could be around anybody. So, so the funding pretty much stopped when COVID hit, and that's, that's what caused it to spike up so much to what is showing currently is the 248. But it's, and this particular graph is at the .4635, which is what I had on the agenda today, and we've had on the agenda for the last agenda or two. And this is what happens with the, how many cash, days of cash at that rate. So it, so next year, from 248, it will drop to 72. Now, that's, that's over the mandated state for what a city has, but it's under what I think both cities look at when they're trying to make sure that they've got money available to do things. And you can see it quickly drops to 23, and then it goes negative. And that's in the, you know, I mean, that's the kind of thing that I thought would happen, but we took how the cities take a look at, at their projections and what the, and it's all projections. I mean, no matter whose ideas you're looking at, you plug in what you believe may be happening, and it's budgets, and so all of those things are the things that you need to be looking at. And so, you know, I think we needed to put this to the public to show that I think that this is really going to impact us, as the three of us have been saying for a good while, that cutting it even to 46 is going to have a negative impact. But going to the no new revenue, which it looks like we're going to, is going to have a much worse impact. So.
I had them run the chart with no new revenue, and it's 248, it's coming year of '22, but in '23, it's 59 days, not 72. And in '24, it's minus nine days. It goes down a lot faster at the no new revenue rate. And in '25, we're 70 days in the hole, and going down 33, 10 years out, we're 329 days in the hole. So if it goes to no new revenue, we're going to have to increase the taxes next year and years after, as opposed to decreasing the tax rate this year 3 cents, which is three times the amount of tax decrease that the City of College Station is doing, and seven times greater than what the City of Bryan is doing. So the no new revenue rate is really going to put us in a hole.
I agree.
Yeah.
So I just wanted, I thought it's, we needed to go back up, given the opportunity for one of the two to show up. We'll have it back on the agenda Thursday at 2:00. You know, I really don't expect either to show up, but that'll be available.
Hopefully, somebody will.
Hopefully, somebody will. And then we can hopefully take action on next year's tax rate and not go to the no new revenue, which, you know, it looks like that's where we're headed.
It does put it in a clear perspective, and thanks for that. But this is what we've been saying all along.
Yeah. So we will move on. We're going to skip '26, '27. For right now, well, '28 is acknowledgment of FY 22/23 budget by actuals by fund as of October 12, 2022, and acknowledgment of FY 22/23 contingency budget to actuals by fund as of October 12, 2022. That's an acknowledgment. '29 is juvenile director's report on detention population. Linda.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. We have 47 youth and juveniles in detention, 34 males, 13 females, and we have 25 on electronic monitor.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number 30, Sheriff's report on inmate population.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Our population this morning is 643, 551 men, 92 women. We have 58 on electronic monitoring, but nine pending.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Number 31 is announcement of interest items and possible future agenda topics.
Judge, I was just going to tell you that Ms. Heidinger mentioned some proposed documents. She sent those to me this morning, and I forwarded those to you while we were having this meeting. So you have those in your email.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. No other announcement than 32's call for citizens' input and/or concerns. Hearing none, we will move back up to number 26 and convening executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.074 to discuss the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline, and dismissal of General Manager of Brazos County Fair and Expo, and then B would be Texas Government Code 551.074 to discuss the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline, or dismissal of county personnel. And of course, I need the two Commissioners, the Attorneys, Cheryl.
Ms. Alizar.
Yeah, HR. I think that was all we need in there. And the time is 10:59.